I'd like to call the February meeting of the board, February 2023. Happy Valentine's, everybody. I hope you enjoy your Valentine's night here at the school board meeting. I'd like to ask Dr. Williams to, Michael Williams, to lead us in prayer. And please.
Let's pray. We're just grateful and thankful just for this day. Thank you for allowing us to be able to come together today as you just be Mr. Montgomery, deal with whatever, keeping them out of the meeting today. Just heal Liam if his sickness and God would just ask today that you give us wisdom in decisions that are made today and the discussion and all that this school board does. Continue strengthening with your wisdom, your spirit in our Jesus Christ we pray. Amen. Have a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing we have tonight is our consent items, and it consists of the agenda, the minutes for the January 10th, 2023, and the January 31st, 2023 meetings, the overnight field trip, Skills USA state competition, which I believe is at the World Congress Center, rental facility for Pop Warner to rent the football stadium. Any questions on any of that? Motion by Mr. Madison, second by Mr. Heitman. We are going, we don't have participation.
All in favor?
I'm sorry. All in favor? We're going, we don't have any public participation, but we're gonna skip down to the superintendent's report and do it before we do the financials.
I am very, very pleased to represent to the board a level of greatness that we rarely see. We have a young lady that I'm gonna ask Ms. Piper to stand if you, that's all you have to do, you don't have to give a 20-minute speech. This is Piper Buller. She is an extremely intelligent young lady, and she took the American Lit Comp test, and she's in Ms. Wilks's class, right? In Ms. Wilks's class, American Lit Comp test, and she did something that all of us dream of, but very rarely does it happen. She got everyone right. Out of 750 possible points, she got 750. That is awesome, a perfect score. Now, this is on our Georgia Milestones, so it's not like it was just Ms. Wilks's test, although those are difficult as well. This was a true Georgia Milestones test. She got a perfect score. We wanted to thank you, we wanted to applaud you, and let everybody know how special that really is. As you look at the state average, it's a 500, is the state average, and you got a 750. The system average for us, or school average, is 508, which is a little bit better than the state, but you kind of blew it out of the water. That's awesome. Congratulations, great job, and we wanted to applaud you, so thank you for coming in tonight. Next item on the superintendent's report, yes, you do not have to stay. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming in. Next item on the superintendent's report, just to finish that, annually, we get a monitoring. Annually, they check to make sure that we are meeting our indicators for our special education services and support. I know this board has seen numbers as low as 85. I know this board has seen hundreds before, but we try and bring it to you annually when we receive it. This is another perfect score of 100, and for this year of evaluation, we received a 100%. So, Dr. Gumby and his staff and all of the special ed teachers, congratulations. That's as good as you could possibly do. So, that's.
All right, a lot of good news.
Well, we try. We try.
Next, we have our financials.
Michael, make sure that we're the only ones that can see that.
Which one?
The, I'm sorry, I'm ahead of you. I apologize. Go, financials, I apologize.
Hello, here are our financials for January 2023. First up, we have our general fund revenues. This is from July 1st, 2022 through January 31st, 2023. So, we're 58.33% of the fiscal year complete. If you look out on the side, I have notes for each of the ones. So, obviously, once again, our revenues are looking in line very, very well for the ad lorm taxes, at 89.81% of what we projected already. We did receive our biggest check, so we do expect checks to be a little bit lower going forward, but I still think we might actually beat that 4.332 amount. Next up, we're at 36% for the local and tangible. That's because we haven't received the December check yet, so once we, so at the side, I showed you that in the prior year, we had $55,000 with the December check, so we actually are in line, we're just a lack of, a lag of payment of one month, so we are pretty good there. Next up, we have our TAVT. We're looking good there, we're at 64%, which is better than the 58.3% average. Other local, we've received, as y'all know, the budget increased by 30,000 because we had Head Start, where we received a check of $23,779, so we are now getting reimbursed for the expenditures we've been seeing. State QBE is always in line, 58.34%. State grants, we're at 9.39%, but that's because of our four buses, which we've talked about. Looking in line with Medicaid income, federal impact aid, we expect to see that this month, so hopefully, at the next board meeting, I can have a big number for us there. It's overall at 67.14%, which is better than our, we're at in the fiscal year complete. Moving on to our expenditures, you can see the prior year where we were at versus where we're at now. I highlighted where I think there's our bit of concern with the red. Red is a warning, and then the gold is good. So, overall, we're lower than our 58%, however, the red items are area of concern, so that was maintenance and operation. So, if we go down, I kind of wanted to let y'all know what was a part of this M&amp;O, even though we're only at 60%, which doesn't look that bad compared to 58%, we still have those pending obligations that we must pay, which is $65,000 for the insurance, $53,000 for the lease purchase, and $60,000 more of just random maintenance, you know, going forward. So, all that, if we already had spent that, that M&amp;O budget would be out of the park, way more than 60%. So, I just wanted to keep that in mind, and when y'all see the amended budget come, hopefully, y'all aren't blindsided. And then I also have detailed descriptions, if y'all have any questions on those. I did want y'all to see what kind of we've been doing with M&amp;O to keep our school in tip-top shape. Going down, once again, just wanted to, you know, reiterate the Georgia power issue that Dr. Light and I have been looking into. As you can see, monthly, we've had as high as 37, and we've had as low as 18. There is no rhyme or reason for this, so when I do perform the estimate, it will be a guessing game. I'll probably just take the average and go from there, but as you can see, it's a big increase from what we've had in the past. Just want to keep that on our radar. Okay, this is our balance sheet, so we have an ending fund equity of 3.7 and a cash balance of 4.2. Farmer State Bank makes up 3.2 of this, and F&amp;M, that's mainly our CD that we have, our two CDs that we have at F&amp;M. And then, once again, here is our fund equity summary. Any questions on that before I go to Splos?
Any questions?
Any question?
The baseball field, at 19,000, that was for the grade in the turf. Are they gonna come back and fix it where it'll drain?
It is draining now. It's not draining as good as it should, but it is draining now, and I did have him out there, not last Friday, the Friday before that, when it was raining, I was out there with him, and he is gonna come back and do some things, but if he does it right now, it's.
I know he can't do it now, but it needs to be fixed.
Yes, sir.
There's a mud hole out there.
He is coming back.
He gonna fix it, okay.
Yeah.
The overseeding turf, is that the other, is that football field, that 29, what is that?
That's overseeing the soccer field, the baseball field.
Okay, so it's all of them?
Yeah. Buddy Buffer's got it on there.
Right, that's what I was thinking, that's all the fields.
Okay, so while we're on this one, I didn't know if I was supposed to wait till the end and ask, but this one has the auditorium lights on there, you had to bid for $91,000 and you spent 50.
Yeah, 53,100, depends on how much we are spending.
So, does that mean we're not spending the full $91,000?
No, because they're not installed yet.
Okay.
When we first did the bids for these, we got a bid for the whole package, and it blew that number out of the water, and then I started doing some research and started talking to some people, and I found a way to get just the lights for a very reasonable price, as you can see, and now we have someone that is going to install them. So, that made it a whole lot cheaper, and I wouldn't have known that without doing all of the research, so we ended up getting the number lower than it was.
So, the expected final purchase is gonna be less than $91,000?
That's my intent, yes, sir. I'm not positive what the installation's gonna be, but we got a guess.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Moving on to our Splos.
Can I ask another question? I didn't know I could ask while we're going, but that is a good one. So, let's go down to, you mentioned a CD. I talked about this last month.
Oh, go down.
Go down a bit.
Right, there, yes. Yes, so F&amp;M is where we hold our CDs, which we have two of, and they're at around 500 and plus for each, and those are the ones that was why we can't, they're already in that, receiving that interest.
Okay, yeah, that's good information. I didn't know that we had any in there. I mean, I saw cash and investments, but it was really never spelled out like that, so.
F&amp;M is where we have our investments, and then SSB increases with that December paycheck, and then it'll usually be, we try to keep them kind of in line, so we're not showing favors or anything.
Okay, so we are receiving some interest.
Yes, and the CDs are split in two, as opposed to if you just put it all in one CD, you have to wait for that CD to mature or take a very serious penalty. We split it so that they mature six months apart, so if we had an emergency, we wouldn't have to take as much of the penalty, and it would give us that flexibility to possibly wait until one matures.
Well, just to throw this out there, I think FDIC insurance is up to 250,000. Is that how y'all got them, in 250 increments?
Five.
We just are insured the 250 in each, so when we report it in the audit report, you'll see where we're, how much we're insured by.
I'm getting into micromanaging, I guess, I guess I'm saying that you're simply insured for 250,000, so if something happened and the apocalypse came, you know, it really wouldn't matter, but you lose 250, it's not backed by the government.
Well, yes, but the auditors say that we're fine. When they do their analysis, they say that we're in good standing, but I can, they're here this week, so I'll ask them.
Just ask them.
They're here tomorrow.
Are we protecting if the bank goes out of business? Are we gonna lose 250 on $500,000?
Are you foreshadowing something? Don't deny the bill.
Definitely not. I like to live a lot longer. That's, that's my only question. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have our Splos Collection Proceeds, up at the top, the one before that one. Okay, our 2022-2027 Splos Collection Proceeds, January, we received a check of 87,000, so it came down a little bit, but not a lot, so over on the side, I just wanted to let y'all see the averages, so that y'all can get a picture of where we were five years ago and where we are now. 55 average, and now we're at 91 average. And then that's the one from 2017-2022, just for reference. Okay, Splos summary, we have an ending balance of 643, 292. Last year at this time, it was 561. Our bond tax summary, right now, we have a balance of 1.266, and last year, it was at 1.03. So, a balance available for future payments, we've already met our April 1st, 2023 payment of 1.177 on our, well, on our way to our next October payment. Okay, capital projects, not much really going on here. We doing a little bit, so the expenditures increase a couple hundred every time. Still just highlighting that 105 that we have in this fund, so I guess, you know, we'll just decide in fact what we're doing with that once, you know, concession stands get built and we're finalized.
Second one is underway, although it's not complete. And if it would quit raining, they could get more time.
Are they digging the foundation for those?
They did that, yes, sir.
Are they gonna lay lockers off there, or are they gonna?
They're gonna put it in posts. I was told we're gonna set it on posts and have a treated floor system.
Obviously, they're gonna put concrete and have a post?
That's my understanding.
I didn't know, somebody told me they were digging over there, and I thought, I didn't know about that.
And we're digging.
That's correct. I have two questions. The impact aid, you said in February, is that a definite, or we not know for sure yet?
Usually, last year, this, it was like February 18th is when we received it last year. They don't really talk to us until we receive it, but it should be February. Should be February.
What we're looking at this month, you know?
Yeah, and I don't know the exact amount either, but it's usually in the 200s, and to be honest, it's property taxes increase, I would assume it to increase based off of what we don't receive.
And possibility of paying down bonds?
I did, I researched that.
Okay.
So, it's not a good answer, sir. Basically, if we paid them earlier, because they're non-callable bonds, we would just have to pay the interest and the principal on a lump sum, and then redo everything and pay, pay someone to help us do a defeasement, and so we really, at the end of the day, we're just better off just paying it this way. We're not gonna reduce our interest if we pay off the principal.
Thank you.
Okay, this kind of reiterates what we've already gone through. We're at 67.14% with our revenues, 55.37% with our expenditures, so revenue's higher than expenditures right now. And then, special revenues, usually, these are kind of in line, so that means I probably just haven't drawn down as many funds as I can yet, so 37.19% for revenues, 41.12% for expenditures. Capital projects, not much activity, we only had 631 covenant expenditures and only 4.64 of interest. Debt service, this is the revenue we've received, and we have not made a payment, and we will make one in March, March 30th. Any questions?
No question?
I'm glad she didn't just answer, she went along. And the star right there, I like that too.
By the way, my color scheme is red means a warning, orange means I don't know, and then yellow means yay, gold star.
Okay, good, good. We didn't see any orange whatsoever.
Yeah, orange is that concession stand, that'd be available for other projects. I'm like, you know.
Is that orange or yellow?
It is orange, but not on this. It is orange. I'll make it a different color next time.
Okay.
The next item is the non-resident enrollment request.
We have a request for a student coming into Lincoln County in pre-K area for 23-24, and this student has a sibling that is already with us, and as you can see, the principal has signed this and approved this, and is recommending that the student attend. Am I your motion approved?
Second by Mr. Reese, all in favor? Next item is the landscaping contract.
We received four total bids on the landscaping contract. On January 13th at 2:00 PM, we received four proposals, as I said, and we opened them at 2:00 PM. The lowest bid is by FS Home and Property for $54,900. We've had face-to-face conversations with them, and I am recommending that we give SS Home and Property mowing, trimming, and mulch an opportunity for two years at $54,900 each year, and there is contract requires background checks and approval of every employee that would be working on our campus.
That is all in order for him to start?
Yes, we approve him, all of that has to be.
He has to do that first, right, before anybody can be on campus.
That's correct.
And this is under the supervision of Mr. Miller's?
Mr. Miller, that's correct, and if that supervision is frowned upon, then we could redo it. If that supervision is positive, we could extend it, so we have an opportunity in both ways in this contract.
But are we locked into two years if there's problems?
We're not, because we have a clause in the contract that allows us to get out of the contract. If he's not happy, we're not happy, we both have the opportunity to bow out.
There's a lot of difference in money.
Yes, sir.
You may want to bow out.
He may, or we may?
He may.
He may, that's correct.
Yeah, because if you look at it, just doing the calculation, it means $36,000 over two years. Rough.
That's quite a bid. That was part of my conversation with, versus.
Yes, part of my concern is the difference between the top and bottom number. I mean, that's a big, that's a big difference between the top and bottom number.
The bottom number had a lot to do with travel for that company.
I mean, if you and Mr. Miller start living, and that price is legit, I'm making a motion we accept your, your, your recommendation.
I have a second.
I have a second.
Second by Mr. Madison. Any other question? All in favor?
Next is the elementary school classroom flooring contract.
We had a mandatory pre-bid meeting, and we do that on purpose so that we can take the proposed bidders around to the actual classrooms, around to the actual areas that either need abating, need to be removed, there's cabinets in those classrooms that have to be removed, just trying to make sure that we give them as much information as possible so that they can make the best and closest bid possible. That pre-bid meeting happened January 31st, and it is mandatory, so if you don't attend the pre-bid meeting, then you can't bid on the project. Now, we've done these types of pre-bid requirements for years, so it's not a new thing. After we did the pre-bid meeting in January, on February 10th at 2:00 PM, we opened a bid proposal during this room. We received two. One of them is from Triple J Construction, which is a company out of Watkinsville, Georgia, and then the other one is Lively Flooring, which is here in Lincoln County. You remember, we tried to do this last year and didn't end up with a result that we could all agree on, so we ended up bidding it for this year because we ran out of time last year due to wanting to do this type of work in the summer. That bid last year, the lowest bid, was much lower than this. In fact, it was more than, or less than half of this, so when we received these bids being this high, the budgeted amount for this job was 162,000, although I was corrected and told it was 164,000. I was wrong by 2,000, and I appreciate you doing that, but I had told everybody 162. It's actually 164. That being said, we do not have enough funds to be able to pay for this. Now, part of the bidding process is if we cannot afford their bid, that's the only way that we can reject the lowest bid in a federal-funded project, is because we cannot afford it. What I am recommending is that we reject all bids, because you can see the, the large amount of cost here, reject all bids, re-advertise starting tomorrow, and see how quickly we can get this to turn around. There may be a reduction in some of the funds. We already own the tile, so the tile cost is not part of this. So, I recommend that we reject all of these bids because we can't afford this, and re-advertise starting tomorrow, which means it'd have to lay on the table for 28 days for them to have a bid. We would do another pre-bid, mandatory pre-bid meeting, and then we would hopefully have a lower bid that we could afford and bring back to you in March or April.
So, we own all the tile?
Yes, sir.
And we're moving out everything except what is bolted in?
That's correct.
So, basically, we're looking at labor prices right there.
That's correct. And abatement, now don't forget they have to abate.
Right, the abatement of asbestos.
Right, and one of the companies told me that their original abatement price increased by 63% from when they had bid last time. I don't know if that was just one company that they talked to, I'm hoping that they can find a company that isn't that much higher, but one of the companies told me that was one of the reasons it was so high, is the abatement had gone up so much.
So, did we load right off what kind of money we got available for this? I mean, I know you said 164 was what we budgeted, but is there other funds that?
There is, there is some leftover, and we can get a lot closer to 200, but I don't want to preload a company to say.
No, I don't.
A number, so.
No, I don't either, I'm just asking for, for our purposes.
Yeah, for, for reasonable purposes, we can go up some, but we can't go up a whole lot. I'm hoping that the abatement companies and the companies that apply can come down in their price a little bit, because we can't afford that, if they want the worst.
Right.
They may laugh and say we're not gonna bid because it's gonna cost us 800,000, I don't know, but I know we can't afford this, and there's no reason to tell a company we can afford it and bid to them.
Right.
Because they're gonna want paid at the end.
Can we contact these companies and ask for cost-saving measures, anything, or is that?
I, I can contact these companies and tell them we're gonna rebid it and tell them that it's too high. Beyond that, I'm fearful of giving them information that may influence a bid. I don't want to be accused of that, but I can tell them that the cost was too high, which is why we'll rebid it, and we did the same thing when we did the elementary parking lot, as you remember, so we've done it before, and I'm hoping that the price comes down.
Right, we gotta figure out a way to.
To afford it, yes, sir.
That's a big jump, though.
Yes, it is.
From 58,000 from the lowest.
Being we have the tile, worst case scenario, if they don't come down enough, do we start to divide the project? What is?
We would have to break it down and start doing, doing it by haul would be my guess. My fear is the federal budget would be starting to get exhausted in time.
That's, that's the reason I was asking the question, because we have a time limit to spend. So, there is a timeframe when we will lose that money?
Yes, if we don't have it contracted, is that the term?
Contracted before September 30th, 2023.
There you go.
I get, yeah, it needs to be broken down.
If we have to, we will, very quickly.
You asked, like, get rid of all of the asbestos, asbestos abatement, and then leave the other for later, or?
Y'all, y'all are gonna work that out, right? Yes, sir. I will do everything I can to bring back a much better price.
Other options?
Yes, sir.
One, two, three, four, five, and six.
I don't know if there'll be six, but I'll bring back other options.
We don't wanna lose them.
No.
Whatever that number is, I'm not saying anymore, because we don't want to give any information out.
But I don't want to lose any of that if we can help it.
No, we can.
So, would that be broken down, where they do part of this summer, part of the next summer?
That, that would be based on what would be. That, that would be based on what would be available by that company at that point. We would have to bid it out by hall possibly, maybe we would bid it out by only the areas that were abated, and then you come back and do those.
Right.
I'll have to break it down and see how close I can get to what is a reasonable price that we can afford. But I want to exhaust these federal dollars.
Right. Well, we, we did our tour last year.
Yes, sir.
I didn't see any areas that were super bad, I mean. I mean, there's just not places that are peeling up, people are tripping over and falling, are there?
No, there, there are a few areas, like in the, the main hallway, that are actually underground, that, that we mentioned during the walkthrough, are retaining moisture probably because of how the building was built. And so there's some loose tiles in some of the front classrooms, and there's always the concern that the asbestos is exposed in there.
So we just need to prioritize, right?
Yes, sir, exactly.
Based on input from the principal.
Well, the principal's already provided that input, but we will prioritize it based on what some companies can do to help us out, and see how close we can get to our, our need.
Y'all got it going on?
We're trying. Trying to come up with options.
Any other questions? We have a recommendation to reject all the bids and basically start again, I make a motion. Motion, Mr. Madison. Second by Mr. Reese, all in favor?
unanimous.
Policies for review.
Okay, we have quite a few policies tonight for review. We have AA, which is School District Legal Status, AB, School Board Legal Status, ABC, Board Member Legal Status, BDC, Policy Adoption, CG, Administrative Personnel, CGPB, Administrative Personnel Time Schedules, and JCEB, Student Discipline Hearings. All of those are fine as written, and we can move those forward. The next one is.
I got a question.
Sure.
On this, uh, school administrators, I think we get this question all the time. Do they earn their time, or do they get so many days a year, sick leave and personal days, how does that work?
By policy, the individual earns, I don't want to say this wrong, they earn ten, and then they get three, they earn ten sick days and they get three personal days, correct?
Who are full-time, or two forty?
Right. Full-time teachers and employees, now they earn one and a quarter.
Teachers?
Teachers, for sick days? Teachers get sick days.
Yes, they get twelve point two five that they earn, yeah, twelve point two five.
So they earn those, and they start with those in the beginning of the year, now, basically, they earn those every month. But according to policy, they're awarded those on the front end, and we try to make sure that they don't.
They can carry them over.
Well, they can carry over up to fifty-five according to policy. And then after fifty-five, then they stay at fifty-five, but the ones that they don't use actually goes into a bank for the retirement system, so you could bank as many as you could possibly earn, and then retire early with, say, a hundred and eighty, or two hundred, or whatever the number is. But those are actually housed through TRS, but we house up to fifty-five. We just have to tally those and send that number to TRS when you tell us that you're retiring.
So if you question, so if they go in a bank, you get how many, a half a year, what do you think? Do they go to TRS?
TRS holds anything over fifty-five, we identify fifty-five. So if there's anything over fifty-five, TRS quote holds it or identifies that. Now, when you say that you're going to retire, then we have our personnel go through and give the exact number that you have earned from day one all the way to your last day of retirement, and we notify TRS of that, and then they tell you that you have, I'm picking a number, two hundred days towards, additional days towards retirement that you did not use. So that would give you, let's say, a year and twenty days more towards retirement than the amount of time you've already put in.
All right, so my question is, can you, if somebody has an illness where they need extended, you know, six months, and they got that much bank, can they use those days?
They're supposed to use those days before they get into an F, before they get into an FMLA situation.
These acronyms.
Family Medical Leave Act.
Okay, yeah, I should know that one, but.
Whoa, okay. And that Family Medical Leave Act only holds your position for sixty days, it does not pay you for sixty days.
What's the TRS again?
Teacher Retirement System.
But they can use all the days, even the ones in the teacher retirement system, or the ones that's retired?
If they had to, yes, sir, because it truly belongs to them. Right. It's being held so that we don't look at anything over fifty-five until we go back and tally the final. Okay, looking at textbook selection and adoption, this is IFA, we've had to make some changes to update this. Learning Resource Adoption goes away, and it's now Instructional Material Advisory. Learning Resources goes away, and its instructional materials will be posted on the district website when feasible and will be made available for review upon request. And then the whole bottom paragraph, a Learning Resource Adoption Committee, is gone away. So just trying to update that policy on textbook selection and adoption. And that's all we have for.
Any other question?
You don't need a motion on that either.
No, sir, that lays on the table for thirty days.
Right.
All right, there's no other questions, I need a motion to go into executive session. I'd like to call this meeting back to order. The superintendent has recommended, and I make a motion that we accept the resignation of Floyd Turner, effective February tenth, twenty twenty-three. Second by Mr. Hytman, all in favor? unanimous. Superintendent has recommended, and I make a motion that we accept the resignation of Dwayne Hianga.
Second.
All in favor? unanimous. Superintendent has recommended, and I make a motion that we accept the retirement of Kathy Moore, effective June first, twenty twenty-three. Ms. Madison, all in favor? Superintendent has recommended, and I make a motion that we accept the retirement of Marcella Goldman, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Second, all in favor? unanimous. Superintendent has recommended, and I make a motion that we accept the resignation of Michelle Wallace, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hytman, all in favor? The superintendent has recommended, and I make a motion that we accept the resignation of Elizabeth Spencer, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Second by Mr. Reese, all in favor? unanimous. Superintendent has recommended, and I make a motion that we hire Patsy Jones as a substitute custodian for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Second by Mr. Madison, all in favor? Superintendent has recommended, and I make a motion that we hire Deborah Frederickson, Holly Arthur, and Jessica Blunt as substitute schoolteachers for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Second by Mr. Reese, all in favor? unanimous. Superintendent has recommended, and I make a motion that we accept all teacher contract as written for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hytman, all in favor?
I'm abstaining from Janice Madison, but I'll.
Okay. All in favor, except Mr. Madison's abstaining from Janice Madison. And superintendent has recommended, and I make a motion that we accept all administrative contracts as written for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Second by Mr. Reese, all in favor? unanimous. Any other questions?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor, second by Mr. Madison. Thank y'all very much.